All right, I would like to go ahead and open up the call to order the special meeting. Team the third, Brooklyn County Board of Commissioner to recognize Commissioner. For indication in.
Father God, we thank you for the opportunity to be together in this meeting with so many important things that we discussed today. And pray that you give us the wisdom to be able to make good decisions for all of county and the benefit of the county's whole. We ask this all in your precious and holy name. Amen.
Father God, we consider the following, I think it has six, so yeah. Consider the following, for which it stands, one day, Father God, this is spoken with the Lord's sake. Over and out. Father God, are there any adjustments or do we have approval on these? Okay, second, I want to say right. All right, so let's start over, turn it over to you, or let's take it to the second.
Okay, we have the short hour point here, and this is really just your session to give us feedback or ask us questions. Okay, this is just a recap of some of the information we've given you before, showing the changes in our total budget and fund balances appropriated each year, showing that we're recommending that the total budget of two hundred ninety-six went through the million dollars this year, and they recommended fund balances approximately fifty dollars. The distribution of your tax letting, just under forty-four percent to education, a little over twenty percent to public safety, and the balance pretty well spread around. This, we've discussed a couple of times, planning the fees and we had originally recommended some rate increases because of the concerns about that and the impact and the fact that our total fees generated are only about eighty-one thousand dollars or so. We are, we are changing our recommend. Just gonna have to forgive you today. I'm thought I'm not contagious. That we're just recommending to leave those rates where they were. And then we will propose a study for next year and give you some more comprehensive recommendations as to where we should go with the final things. This is recap of the budgets and expendable net position appropriated in utilities, taking in this same information we shared with you previously, which shows the relative changes there. Our process from here on out, this workshop to discuss, get your feedback today, then at three today, the public hearing will begin. It's actually already begun online through email. And you certainly can continue it through June seventeenth. And then on June seventeenth, we would hope that you could adopt a budget, any proposed rate change changes. I celebrate the day, so we're here to take notes and follow your interest.
Yeah, very good. So now is the time, I guess, that we have for questions. And I did receive back, or everybody else did, a list of questions proposed and the information that came back that you provided. Are there any other questions that the commissioners have for the matter?
Did we get any resolution on the GSAT dues versus what the MPO dues were?
We do not have any final information on GSAT dues.
What, how does the budget that's proposed address that?
As proposed, the budget, we're leaving as it was. But we can be, believe that if you so wish.
Well, definitely, I mean, we did not do a product that the tax office wanted us to do, so we still have to fund, collect the relevant funds.
I believe we, when you told us to not do that, we reallocated those for some other items.
I mean, moving forward, I mean, I agree with what your idea was is that, first of all, I do think that MPO members and GSAT members should be treated the same, which means either we start paying the Wilmington MPO dues for those folks or we quit paying it for GSAT. And I agree with your present idea that it would be better if the GSAT members paid their own and the MPO members continued paying. So I, I hate to open up a precedent and go the other way at all, if we can maybe put something where before any dues checked or written, that comes back to this war.
And we can, but they, they have, GSAT has to be able to anticipate what those fees would be and what portion of them are attributable to the county and what portion of are attributable to the municipalities that participate in GSATs, and we don't have that yet, so we, we can't, we can't tell them.
What are our dues to GSAT due?
When they build. How about this? I know that we, we've had some, we have been discussing here lately about some issues that we had in GSATs, especially with the new territorial expansion. I know that we discussed doing a letter that we go out. I also know that this Friday is a policy meeting down in South Side of Louisville. And, and I will, I am playing on the pendulum now. But I think, I think we, we're probably ready to review a draft of a letter to discuss those issues that we had with the interpretation of bylaws. And so maybe at the same time we do that letter, we could combine all these other things like the funding and the separation of funding, so we have how that works. I mean, there seems to be a lot of things that is going on with GSATs that we're not getting the full information or we're getting incorrect information. And it's causing not only the county municipalities to make decisions based on incorrect information that's being provided from the leadership of GSATs.
And regarding the dues issue, to me, I mean, regardless of which way we go, I just want the three towns in the MPO to be treated the same way as the towns in GSATs.
And, and I agree, that's appropriate. And I'll tell you, the only direct information I've been able to get from GSATs over the last year on this particular issue is that they don't have dues that they only require participants to pay project managers, but there were.
Do you mean we don't have the payment?
There were fees paid in years that there were no projects going back to, I think, twenty fourteen. So that did not appear to me to be quite the complete answer.
That sounds like a contradiction to point out in the letter.
What was the last date that we paid bills? So that date might give us the date that they would bill us. When did we pay them last night?
I'm actually looking for that right now. Can't find on the payment to GSATs, grant strand transportation.
Since twenty-four.
I don't talk more back of. Well, that's interesting.
Yes.
Now, I'm fine if that continues to be the case.
So we need to make sure we're paying.
If they, if they billed, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, in speaking with the PA, I've been told that the way to address this is a resolution going to the chairman of the DOT and that will carry a significant weight for the chairman as to whether the expansion is even allowed.
Yeah, I, I agree that we may have, I think we've got two issues. I think we've got the management, the leadership of GSATs, and I think we've got this territorial expansion that we've certainly done.
Three issues. It's made the dues.
The dues and the other, you know, so there's three different issues. And, and I think we can, I think we can consider a resolution for the, for the expansion. And, you know, and I guess what I, I know that this kind of brings up, we opened the doors that we're going through it, but if we can give staff some direction on what, where to go with these three items, maybe, maybe that might be beneficial for the time and then, then we can come back and, but on whether it's right.
I think staff has a pretty good idea of where we stand on all three issues.
That's maybe on the dues, just to get it in the minutes. Is everybody in agreement that the two MPO, MBOs should be treated the same?
I agree with you.
So that's one of the best.
Yeah.
And if we're against the expansion altogether, then that would require the Commissioner, the Chairman of the DOT, you know?
And then the, the body of interpretation of the bylaws, which caused, in my, in my opinion, the interpretation of the bylaws caused the issue with the expansion to be voted on the second.
The county authority has approved a draft of that letter for you to discuss.
So I think they can be separate items and separate issues that we discuss with GSATs. But, or we, we did.
If the board's in agreement on the concept of that resolution, maybe we can have that on our table at the next meeting.
We're committed there.
Not that meeting, I mean, two weeks, not two hours.
Yeah. So, so if you want to send us a draft of a resolution addressing that, and if you need some information, separate departments. That's, that's. Okay, now, we've gotten that, but it's rather taken care of. Are there other budget questions about the issues?
Never.
Anybody wants to?
I have some stuff. If, no, I'm essentially with you, but. The inventory, or I guess the budget for the sheriff's office, I have several questions, I guess. We were required, and I think they changed the patrol vehicles to thirteen now, is that correct? Or fifteen? Okay, are they, what are they doing with the other vehicles? Are they deadlining them? Are they not going to be working anymore? You getting rid of, or what is the status of the old vehicles?
My name?
Yeah, you can come on.
Yes, ma'am. What happens is, so the vehicles, they'll get, we deadline vehicles, we deadline several vehicles streaming high mileage that we move them around so we can still get more life out and deadline other vehicles.
So how many are you deadline?
Well, if we get whatever the board approves us, well, at least that means a war.
So you're deadline thirteen, is that what you're telling me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, can you use those equipment out of the deadline vehicles instead of buying new equipment? I know some of that footage should be beneficial.
Some equipment, yes, ma'am, but some, the older the vehicle is outdated, so we have to, the, the, all the equipment doesn't always transfer over depending on the type.
That's true.
Depending on the type of vehicle, we're able to get, you know, their own contract, you know, it makes, it's a charger, the difference between a charger and a, just for example.
And it'll work our.
Our homework, they don't always work the same, so you have to do that. But we also do take equipment out of deadline vehicles to try to use everything we can and upfitting other cars, so we don't have to purchase.
So we need to update the vehicle equipment of the thirteen or less.
Yes, ma'am. Now, I do understand too, with that, you know, we do, the equipment we take out, we try to do repairs because sometimes over a period of time, things unfortunately are going higher and higher in cost, so we try to be as cost effective as we can. It's like the equipment out of the vehicles, use what we can. We do also have to replace equipment too. And so with that said, we have to purchase it, we have to purchase the equipment to replace it. So if you're having equipment on hand and stock in hand, the downtime is less than it would sit there waiting on something to come in.
Okay, the unmarked vehicles, where are they going? Are they being, any, any of those being deadline too?
We, not only marked, but they're unmarked. We did like all, all different types of vehicles, yes, ma'am.
So you've got a deadline six with us, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And you need new equipment, because if they're in the unmarked, you only need the blue light, the slide ray, the red light?
Yes, ma'am, flashlight, charger, things like that. But also understand that too, again, depends on what type of vehicle we can get. Would determine what we're going to be able to take and any other equipment in there, so we'd have to be able to equip the vehicle out the gate when it comes in.
The, the canine, I'm part of the vehicles of the equipment, is any of that transferable to the new, new equipment, like cages?
Ma'am, with the canine vehicles, depending on, so we, it may depend on what the vehicle style is, cages are different sizes for different vehicles. So depending on what type of vehicle we are able to get, may be determined by that. It's not a Chevrolet and it's a Durango, the width, the width of those vehicles are totally different, so you can absolutely, you have to get a cage or it's either that or it rides in the backseat tearing up everything else.
Okay. The truck slide storage, are they, because you already have some, right?
Yes, ma'am, they're used now.
So what's going to happen with them? Do you need to speak more? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, to efficiently be able to store the equipment, so it doesn't, so if you don't, without slides, so it can.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. So you have, we have to have the equipment to prevent damage to the other equipment, they have to do, have to do their jobs.
Well, I knew you had your slides already, so I didn't know why you would need more unless there's more equipment, more trucks, as you want, is that?
Well, and sometimes we can repurpose, we try to repurpose and stuff as much as we can, or it may be replaced, you know, without having right front. I can tell you, it's, that is to replace and to store the equipment in the vehicle.
And that one in particular, most likely, especially for Joe Corino, he does all the radio power sites and keeps all those up and running.
But that's, that's under the title, that's a different line, that's a different slide. That's, that's on their inventory. I'm under your, just the sheriff's office, major operating. You've got two there too.
This is for the crime scene truck.
It's for what?
We have, we have one crime scene truck and that doesn't have a slide, I mean, the slide we're working with.
But you're ordering two, so.
We're only getting one slide.
No, you're getting two. You got three, Dan, you got one for the communications and two for your sheriff's office.
The general ones that are in the budget are the ones that are representative of what we need for our existing trucks and our existing.
Yeah, you're getting two.
My apologies, I wanted just one, so if it's two, then we need two. It's for trucks that do not have that air equipment from site to site or throughout the, it's a need, it's not a want. Yes, ma'am. My apologies.
Now, you're fine, you're fine, there's no problem. The other question is, is my SWAT equipment, is, what is that? It's not, you get same type of equipment you're buying, more helmets, more?
Yes, ma'am, what's the email response?
It's on, it's on the communication.
The comms equipment. So with the equipment that is put into their helmets to be able to talk to each other and communicate to the whole team. And so we have, we're in need of replacing those, those units.
So they're needing to be replaced.
Yes, ma'am.
Did they get damaged or something? Because we just ordered a live steer and they need to communicate when you have, when you follow them.
Which one?
Which one? Wait, hold on, I find it. Hold on just a second. You had helmets that was twenty was purpose last year.
That's the helmet, yes, ma'am. That's just the protective gear, that's not the communications gear, the guts inside the helmet that needs to be up fit for the team.
Okay, so how do you communicate when we've had that stuff in Wilmington?
We're currently using older helmets with older comm systems that are past their end of life. And the SWAT commander has requested to replenish the helmets this year and the comms coming up in this fiscal year to be able to then deploy all twenty at one time to the division and get rid of all the helmets that are now past end of life.
And we were.
And they are compatible with the helmets.
Communication, because when I rode the motorcycle, we communicated through the helmet.
Yep, and they are compatible with those helmets, so that's why we can't just switch them out, if that makes sense. They're, they're, they're just having their special.
They're real eaten, is what they eat in the bar. But the helmets are already purchased, so.
Correct, we're not deploying those yet, because they need the comms. So we're using the old helmets that are outdated at this time.
So are we purchasing new helmets with communication or just?
It's just the helmet.
So we put them in, the communication stuff in the helmet.
Who's installing them?
They, we do that.
They'll be in house, yes.
And as prior SWAT commander, I can tell you, they are needing to update new radios, with an updated radios in order for them to be compatible. It's a safety thing as well, so it's extremely a high on the safety end for them to be able to communicate.
And here's one thing we try, we try to keep in mind, you know, obviously, we all have to manage within a budget. So somehow we may have to get some equipment some week, some year, and then another equipment another year, just to meet budget. So while we got the helmets last year, this is the year we're going after the comms, so.
And that's fine. I don't have a problem with that, I understand, but I wanted to know what it was for. If they're communicating, it's safe, it was the helmet communication part.
Yes, ma'am.
The other thing that I'm questioning is your laptops, you twenty-six laptops, where are they going?
Twenty-six laptop?
Because we got thirty-four last year.
Yes, ma'am, and every year we run a report, we base it off of the county policy of five-year replacement. So every year we run an end-of-life report, and that's when it's going to be replaced. And it's kind of every year we have a group with laptops that we replace.
I have seen that list, a replacement list. I want an inventory to show the dates when the laptop is purchased and when you define new sales.
It's on that inventory list, it did have the date of purchase, I believe.
I will have to go back and look. I have, I've been out of town, so I have.
Yeah, that inventory list had all IT equipment that is managed by our IT director here, and it has a purchase date that you can see the ones that he selects out that are for this year's.
So what, are y'all getting rid of the old ones?
Yeah, ma'am. Most of them, they come back and they're also happy to go to the trash.
Okay, well, where are these laptops going? Who's getting them?
I can, I have to go through and I can be sure. It's deputies.
Okay, then you've got on the next page, you've got the running MTV.
Those are for deputies out on the road.
So that's twenty-six, and that becomes thirty, forty, forty, well, fifty-two laptops. So that's, that's a lot of laptops when you had thirty-four last year and you get fifty-seven.
We have four hundred and six computers deployed for the sheriff's office, so four hundred and six.
But how many are deadies?
I have to run.
So everybody, y'all need your laptops.
Correct, everybody else will get a laptop.
Yeah, right. So that's my, that's my question. So I have concerns about your laptops when you find both kinds.
I want to make a note that of the five-year cycle of replacements.
I'm, I agree with five, five to seven years. So because computers are not going to last long, because everything changes, technology changes, and stuff like that.
Right, and what I just wanted to add was that typically those, that number is more what you see this current fiscal year. This is the one year that, you know, we got a lot of computers that year, whether it was an increase in positions or what have you. So that, this is kind of the, the heavier load, if you will, year of that five-year cycle. But they traditionally fall into a similar structure as what you see this current fiscal year. This is just the.
Well, I'll go back and look at the data that you sent.
That's a question if I can. When, on the vehicle laptops, I'm assuming they're permanently banned, so they can't go in and out. Do they, do they also have some, maybe some of the supervisors, do they also have an office laptop or computer in addition to their laptop?
Only, only like a lieutenant, which they share a computer, depending on what officer in, captains have a, an office laptop. But actually, some of them use their, their laptop as both. That's a way for us to stay in mind. We, they can come in to the office, plug in their laptop, and it's just a monitor.
Documentation.
And documentation, so.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming though, that also comes with somewhere to take or, take it in the car, take it out of the car.
And there's certain software that we cannot legally put on laptops that have to maintain in ECI, or business checks and everything like that, that have to be on desktop. Like that's the way.
And that is their, that is their office, especially unicorn patrol, that is their office out there on patrols, so they have to do those, it comes in and out.
Well, I'm fine with that. I just want to check the inventory here. What is a cell phone IT computer?
So that's for.
Because I know you already have one.
So that's, that's for doing the cell phone dumps.
So do you need another one?
That's a replacement.
Smart is a replacement.
Well, she can appreciate.
And how old is this, is this the one you have?
The other one should be at four point five years. That's when we run the report in January, and by the time we get there, we get five years.
And what is the gray, gray key computer?
Similar, but gray key does different types of cell phone data collection and cell write. They do, they, they have different skill, different skills and resources that they do for that type of investigatory work. One is more iPhone, it's one more Android, that sort of thing. The companies have kind of aligned themselves with various types of carriers and products.
So you also have down here Chinese laptops. Why can't they use the laptops they have? Because that's another, ten more laptops.
So that was a.
So the state of North Carolina is going to a, a Catus, an online-based testing. Okay, so, yes, ma'am, so we run in-house, I'm the school director for our basic detention officer program, basic SMI, and our telecommunications program. The state is moving towards, they've already started with BLET for the new, because I'm on several state committees for training, so they are moving to testing online. So our students, that come to our class, is going to have to test with the states. They won't test with us and with paper tests like we do now. They're going to have to go on the computers and test with a secure login and be able to test right there in the room and be able to test. So that is what that is for, and it's just a basic for us to meet the need that's, that's coming. BLET is already coming, and sheriff's training standards is following suit, and it's coming, so.
Tell me about the IAS, Dan, for the field training officer.
Yes, ma'am. So when an officer is in training and they're in a vehicle with their FTO, you have the one laptop that's there, that's mounted, that's part of that vehicle. And the, the reason behind the iPad FTOs or the, those items was for the FTO to be able to make their DOR, the daily observation reports, and making notes and doing any work they need to do on that iPad because there's not enough room to have two mounted laptops. So the deputy in training is in, you know, in the driver's seat and responding to a call and doing what they need to do to place that, make a report or answer that call, then that iPad is geared to help on the training side for that officer to make notes in real time with their DORs.
So you have eight Chinese officers that go out and.
They're field trained.
Regular, or they can't use the same IP address, or are they doing it twenty-four seven, or?
Recently, they've been having somebody in their car almost every single shift because of, we've got a lot of applications. It was great, I'm not complaining about that, but they have people in their car all the time. Now, it's a twelve-week program, then that's just the basic. Now, if they have any issues or they have some deficiencies that to work on, it may go longer than that. But those guys, they have been hot seating at people's, which, again, I'm not complaining about because we're getting a lot of happens cases come in. So that means less, less overtime for us. Yeah, we're not assigning to the FTO, so they're walking around with laptops just because they're in FTO, it's to the trainee. So every time the trainee gets in the car, the different FTO, they're still going to have their tablet to get to the, the FTO.
It also is for documentation purposes, it protects us liability-wise with the trainees and their, their abilities, what they see, they're doing good, bad. So they, that is to help protect not only the office but the county as well, for them to be able to document stuff.
Okay, the training room presentation system, I can't imagine that's out of date. I mean, y'all have been had up-to-date everything from the beginning. And the last time I was in some of the area, everything looked great to me when I went in there and saw the presentations.
Thank you.
My other idea is, we need to get the commissioner's chamber updated, that needs to be updated. People can barely understand what we're saying when they zoom in. So we need to get this more updated before we update stuff that's really not a need. To me, that can be removed, but that's my personal feelings there. And then the special ops carport, I don't think that that's neat. Like you look over there at the area where all this equipment goes and the vehicle goes, there's how many carports over there? It's just another storage thing. Sometimes we need to clean up, so we don't need more stuff. So that's another thing I've said that needs to go. But I'm just wanting to.
That port, that carport is the last one that we need to get critical stuff out of the sun, out of the weather, so it lasts longer. Because sitting in the sun, it deteriorates, that's, that's.
Like, playing out what you have is. Like, playing out what you have is my, is my personal, my feelings on that, and, and everybody has to go their own way.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the, uh, let's see, I have, um, let me see if I can talk. I don't understand, I know you have two CBSA machines, why do you need another one?
We're replacing one of the existing units. We have one that's still online, I think that's from, gosh, fifteen years or so, we need to replace when we, um, had it fixed. Um, sorry, the polygraph machine, the polygraph machine repaired last year, but yeah, our CBSA and polys are definitely in need of replacement. Um, and that was requested from our investigators, and so we put into budget request. And then we would deadline the unit that is replacing.
Okay, you also requested a radar trailer. Did y'all go to the highway safety program and ask for them to provide one?
Through the GHSP grant, we were able to get some speed signs and light hours and things of that sort, but that was not an item that was listed as an eligible item for us to apply for. But we've seen a lot of great success with those radar trailers and deploying them throughout the county. It's really helped with a lot of speed questions and concerns, it's helped our traffic unit know what areas they need to really saturate and, and, and focus on. Um, and that's just the goal there, is to continue that good work that our traffic unit's been doing to try to get the speeds down.
Okay, the golf cart, um, I guess we should see this, give y'all a golf cart. Um, the special ops shop there, gravel, um, I'm not really for that until some of that stuff is cleaned up, I mean, I think there's a lot of stuff that can be gotten rid of and then put gravel in. Let's see, what else I have here?
You know, those, uh, speed trailers, is that, does that advise, does it record and give you back feedback?
We actually get data from them.
That's part of the.
I mean, I get they are a little pricey, but they do give us feedback and data. I mean, we do get a lot of complaints, as you can imagine, in D.C. County, we've only got three traffic guys working those, so when we get an area that's new to us or we're seeing a bunch of problems, we can deploy those. It's usually by the rest of the citizens to get it out there, and then we can see if it's actually a problem, because, I mean, not everybody.
They'll actually give you the, the time of day and how many vehicles.
The speed, the range of speed, yeah, gives us a lot of good data.
I've, I've worked with several times and they've been through the.
As the sheriff said, several citizens request them, and we don't, times you could, if you had a hundred, it wouldn't be enough for some of these communities.
I think I've got four just did, uh, plan patient that, that made you have any use, so.
Do they send that all those?
Uh, you know, I wouldn't see any data as to, you know.
I'd figure it's no, because that'd be good for us if it did, then we could use that data.
I mean, it, it looks like the, uh, it, it looks like advice that, that could be provided. Right, I mean, it's a high, it's a higher quality, uh, monitor, so I would think so, but, um, but I, I thought that might help with the enforcement, you know, but then I think one thing for people to say, oh, yeah. But then turn it around, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, you know, a couple of days later, it's, you know, I mean, it, I don't think it's any secret, anybody. EMS, we usually monitor all the calls and traffic, and there's peak hours for everything. And so I'm sure that, you know, Longwood, it's a town road, and I'm sure that there's peak hours for people traveling up and down the highway. There's a town road, you know, a higher rate of speed, so I mean, that's something for your budget.
I've sent a, a latest report to the, to the ministry, so I can see the information to get from it, but we deployed it on, um, Ultra White Road after those, after that fatality.
They did.
And, um, we got a lot of good information, so I'll send you, just so you can see what it looks like and see what information to get.
And I don't think it was, it slowed me down a little bit, I mean, for us, it's a good, but, you know.
They are a good person.
It's out there, it's meaningful to just relax.
Uh, there was one more item, uh, do we bring up the capital diagnostic? You know, on the capital, um, you know, with the. I guess with the animal, um, adoption, um, I, I want to, uh, spread my concerns, I think that, um, it's too much money to, um, put into housing or sheltering animals when, uh, the purpose of an animal, animal shelter is to provide and protect and care for the animal until they can be given to someone or a sick one that has to be put down or whatever. It's not a place to house, and the bigger you get, the bigger we have to house. And, uh, we have a lot of, um, low-income citizens here that are paying taxes that don't even have a house to live in. And we're going to make them a bigger shelter for animals that are not paying taxes. So, um, I think it's, to me, if, if you want to do the core, I'm really not, um, thinking something should move forward with. But if you just do the basic thing, then I'll be fine. If I'm not for the whole elaborate thing that you have in the plan.
So, um, on, on your comment about the animals and the length of stay, because I heard you say, um, a couple weeks ago, that you thought they were there for a year or more. So the longest stay of our animal was about a month. That is the average long stay. Usually, they're only there for about a week or two. So they get through the process, they become adoptable after we evaluate, and then luckily, thankfully, we got adopted out, and we have a lot of great citizens that are willing to take these animals, and that's phenomenal. I have no problem going back to, um, our assessor and give him a range to stay in. I mean, that was just, that, that was a price on the assessment, worst-case scenario that he gave us. The only thing that I'm asking for is to move to the next step, see exactly what the bare bones, what we need to get through for the next twenty years, and then see if, if that's something that would be approved. I'm not asking for you guys to approve everything today.
Well, the thing is, when it's on the capital improvement and the money is set aside there, uh, that helps, because I think you have it on there, uh, set aside.
We, we, we have it on there at their estimate, but we proposed debt funding for it. So if they come back with, say, a six million dollar project or a five million dollar project, then we would only stand the project that the board approved. That's, that's like a placeholder on the CIP.
But on the CIP, I would prefer to have four point five at the most, because we also going to have to come up with money to furnish it, technology in there, and all that. That's not even included in the.
It is, yes, ma'am.
It was about two hundred and twenty thousand, and that was from our IT director for, um, all the infrastructure and the furniture as well, about two thousand nine, so.
But she said the core of the building was, uh, he said that the core was four point five or five point five.
He gave ranges from his initial assessment, and then he gave a tailored down burden of the core, and so we would then, um, and I also mentioned in that, uh, proposal that you could tailor your bid to make the, the, the proposers come back with those types of options. You can really tailor it however you like it to be. This was just the assessment of, you know, using the highest figures that we can, just to be on a worst-case scenario basis in terms of estimating and budgeting. But from there, we can tailor that bid and that proposal to go out and just mention we want just the core with some options that we can see if we want to add to it or not. Um, so, um, but as part of the CIP, we did also include the, uh, the amount for IT and office to get the inside of the building furnished and equipped. Yes, ma'am.
So, so what today is the, what is the price that you currently have, so I have to look it up.
We have originally requested a name in the CIP, and we will certainly put whatever the open board collectively asks us to in, in the CIP, but generally, we prefer to give you a number that the actual bids would not likely exceed, but we will put any number you want to.
Well, I think, I, I think from the president, I think, folks did a great job presenting on the show. There, there's no doubt that the shelter, current, current shelter has already exceeded its life expectancy. Uh, so we know, we know we need to do something. Uh, I think what everybody's trying to give to is a, uh, like you said, a horrible price to the, oh, that's, you know. I do want to, uh, I do want to mention the fact that, you know, your, your volunteer is probably as strong there as it is anywhere else. So, uh, those are dollars, those are dollars that we're not spending because you, you've got the, the resources at your hands to be able to, uh, to utilize and produce the cost back to the citizens because of that. We rationalize, uh, because, uh, that's a, yeah, and that's another big, big job, uh, that y'all are to assume, so. If we can come up with a number and a figure.
The, the current, the current placeholder we're in the CIP is seven point five million.
Steven, which budget are we anticipating is actually being constructed in?
Uh, I don't think it would be constructed before twenty-six.
So we would be actually debating the final amount of the twenty-six budget, because that's one we'd have to bid, correct?
Aaron, listen, hey, so one, one thing that, uh, that matters is if, um, if we did fund this, there's a lot of savings in a debt issue if we can grab it in a way that's like a debt issue to potentially bring our health and human services building. Um, that's true, because it's basically going to be the same cost whether we just have the health and human services building or the health and human services building and animal protective services. So that could have a lot to do with it. Um, if we get an issue on its own, we're going to have almost all of those beneficial expenses, um, again, all over again, so, uh, that, that could impact when, if we can, time is we bend together.
So what's right now, it must be day on the health and human services.
I'm looking for that thing.
We don't have the construction that you probably would hope to be able to get underway before two thirtieth of next year.
Yes, sir.
I, who was it, company, I think the president, it was an RX, RSS, was it?
It's a DBA of, of like D W G Architects, this whole shop planners dot com is a DBA that they use.
I, I have respect for the asking for, but again, I don't want to spend seventy-five million dollars either. It's the one thing they share us budget that I, I have some angst over. Um, I, the, whatever you call the middle part, the.
The core. The core.
Core, I, I don't know that we have a need for that at this time, it seems to me that was a big chunk of money.
Sound, well, that's how it works, I mean.
Thank you. Uh, I don't know that we actually have a need for that at this time. I have no problem putting an addition on the, the current building. I don't know what it is, but that might be a thousand, four, one fifty, one hundred.
We already have the, it's already there.
I, 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 I don't have a problem expanding what we already have because of needs, okay? I, I'm just not in favor of putting that four in the minute, in the middle.
You mean the salad court?
Yeah, um, I, I think that could wait. It, you know, we can do that all the time.
Again, I, we have no problem going back to the drawing board and, and seeing the, you know, that's fine, take that out, see what we can cut out to still meet the needs of the, the, the immediate needs of the animals and then for the future. I haven't a problem, and that's what I'm asking, is for us to be able to go back to the drawing board and give more of a concrete number versus this, you know, roundabout number that we got.
The, uh, the, the salad court is where they drive in and get the animal out, so they could be out of the rain. They, they are permanently out of the rain now because they have a, um, on in the back and, and fence that they can lock in so when they get the dog out. So they're out of the rain forever and long forever.
When it's not taken up for stores of stuff, yes, it's possible, but.
But, but as far as that, I don't even want the salad court at all. I just want a basic building that provides the service that we're supposed to provide for an animal shelter. Um, but that's just it, now, I.
The one thing I caution you is going back to what we're doing now, because that's not going to last. We, we made it last as long as we did. We're going to be right in the same mode again, so I'm a hundred percent with you what you're saying, but let's.
Yeah, but this guy, this guy here did a great job, and the thing is, he's trying to say that this is not much, he, he emphasized that we.
That it can be scaled back, absolutely, yes.
That's part of the proposal process, which we can.
I will restate the same thing I said two weeks ago, which is I'd like to see us, you know, in the bidding process, get them to bid on high, medium, and low. That's what my clients asked me to do, was give them two or three options so that we can know what they're actually proposing, because right now, we're just batting around numbers and not really having any idea what we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Because we haven't gotten a bid on it.
Correct.
I would like for us to not rule out looking and doing everything in one shot, because there may be some economies of scale and cost savings to do it all at one time versus coming back and having to start a whole new project. Like, we won't know that until we get a bid, but I, you know, I think, I don't know that we have enough information to nail down a number, because we haven't got the bids.
Correct.
Do. You know, I've been around a lot of times with different dogs that are done, sometimes you're going to see whales, sometimes they're issues that we found out later. And I've also seen where they've been compromised and been done with all the finances. That's all along with intentions. But the reality is you can't get people that are involved in the process, because the world's been running, I studied, they never had to work it, they never had to deal with it. Then look at the long-term after. We can buy cheap car, and that's what you're going to get, you get what you're paid for, but. I think what, you know, Mr. Williams was saying, high, middle, and low is a good thing, but I think you guys are going to have to tell us what we really think you got to have, whether you're trying to. And then one of the factors is, how can we get something that'll be worthwhile, but we can all feel good about it in the long term and say, yeah, it worked. We didn't cut our roots on the spy effects. We did what we felt was the very best with the overall aspect, because if you buy it right the first time, you save money, you buy it long, everything. It's my three cents. A little bit, I, I think Frank did on, well, give us, give us options, yeah. What we absolutely have to have, what we would really like to have, and then that Walter Royce that he proposed, um.
I had on the first thing.
So how do you propose listing it in the CIP then?
I, I'm not economical, just leaving it as it is, because again, the CIP is, it's not over a range of hundred or anything, it's not a thing, and then. And we can get the N C N with alternates, then ultimately you select an alternate, and that's what we would really fund.
Well, I, if we do it, we still, I would like to do it like, um, Aaron has said, would be combining it with the health.
Well, it's, it makes sense to, to do it jointly, but I think the time it's going to take to plan the health and human services building should be at least as long as the time it's going to take to, to have a buildable plan for this building, so I, I don't foresee an issue with that.
So we get on moving forward, like?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
All right, thank you, buddy.
And I think everything from the detention center is fine and the communications center, I think is fine.
All right, and I think, all right, thank you. All right, any more questions?
Um, remember. We can get, go through here, complain at the ballgame all the time. I just don't go to that.
Hey.
I'm glad, I'm glad she had to go to that ballgame. I'm glad the young lady's won.
Yeah. Thank you, Steve. Uh, I, you know, I did wear red for stage. Anyway, okay, I think I'm, I think I'm.
Well, y'all are at desks, I guess y'all are okay, right?
That's my main question at the beginning.
All right, I do want to, uh, I do want to say that it has been, uh, in, in my opinion, it's, it's been a right, uh, good budget process. And, you know, I would like, and something came up the other day that brought to our attention that there might be, uh, a couple of million dollar worth of unspent funds available um, in the American Rescue Act that came, came in this, that, and I think it's candy dollars now. But it's going through the science, candy dollars thing. I would like, you know, to ask administration, I understand that we had somewhere maybe twenty eight million dollars in requests that came through that were sent back and, uh, before the budget was put. If you could come up with, um, two, three, maybe four, uh, the top priorities that you feel like they, these were good programs that we need to look at in the future. Um, so that we can actually see what those are in your opinion, uh, in your recommendation. And then I'd like to get better clarity on this three point one million in the funds that are available. Uh, to see if there's something that we need, may need off of that list that we may need to, to address uh, with, uh, with, with the funds everybody.
We, we'll be glad to do that. In fact, uh, you're in, it's been working and monitoring our year end projections. And sometime between, I don't know, between now and June thirty, hopefully by the next week, uh, we can tell you the amount of funding that might be available, uh, or projects before June thirty, that would include the hard on funding.
Okay.
Uh, there and, and some, some of them even were, we're even looking at some of the ones that we proposed to the inhabitants to see how much of those we might have year end funds in reserve to.
And, and then we passed years, we got, we passed the vote one month and then the next month we added employees, uh, and added staff. Uh, I had rather for us to see if we can review that on the front side with, with the, with, with the things that you feel like are essential for moving forward next year.
We, we will, sir. And I shared with our department managers my frustration that we were asking for new employees before the budget was drawn. And I don't think you'll see that. Particularly if they happen to begin this year. Uh, but we will take a, a close look and see if there are other things that we, if there are other unknown things that popped up since budget prep. Uh, that, that we might need. And we really, we're not going to have the type year end money uh, that we've had in some other years, but quite frankly, that's because of the, the big industrial commitment that, that, that we need. Otherwise operationally, we had an absolutely fantastic year.
Can't remember my men. Here's what we pull this to an end. I want to thank our staff, our department, everybody involved in this budget. You know, we, we had stated early in the year back in January, we did not want to hear about tax increase. Bring us a, a budget zero tax increase. And we have done that. And we, we've done that, adding eighty seven new positions and things. Several others complete, I believe. Um, I, I think this is the best, this is my eighth budget, um, in the county. I, I don't think this budget went down before of the work that was done by our staff and our departments. It's to do everything we're doing, adding all of these positions and vehicles and computers and technology and everything else. And to do it with the same dollars, it is just amazing. I can't thank you all enough. I just, a guy within Kelly, we agree. I, I look under the door of, this is the budget. And, and to go through all of this and, and come back with the same tactic pretty impressive. I can't thank you all enough for the work that you've been doing. It's just a six month process. Thank you.
You know, well, well, thank you, but we, we certainly appreciate the board's support. But in, in all honesty, it's the work that this board and fire force have been running with the county. A place that this sort of development could have turned into a quality development that contributes to the, to the county and the community that really makes this possible.
You know, I'll tell you, and a lot of my partner has done a lot of human's work. They have borned all their departments. I mean, we've seen the, the EMS going to HHS and that, everybody felt good about it. We've seen a lot of moves for the years and, uh, this current administration, thank you very much, has called up and had an increase in inflation to a town of about thirty to thirty five percent compared to what the previous administration was a per annum about one point nine percent. So that means our money is going to work about sixty to seventy cents more than what it was in the previous administration. And that's to deal with that as well as all the things such as supply chain issues. And everything that you guys have put over, can't say enough about how appreciative we are. How many are a lot of movies? If you're really hard, because y'all are willing to make it happen. And we really do appreciate your commitment to service and passion for us. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Just did a thank you to the staff. This, you get about a month off and then it starts over. But I, I don't think most people who aren't engaged in this realize just how far advanced you got to start working on this, how much work goes into it. And we've done an excellent job.
Well, thank you. And I certainly concur that we have absolutely stellar employment force here under care.
I think, uh, our outside partners too, uh, working through the budget for that, I mean, being a given college, an additional fourteen and a half city increase in the budget. The schools totals, uh, three point five percent increase in B S R I, a nine percent increase in your budget. Yeah, that, I think that's a lot for, you know, even having a tight budget to be able to do this thing for our outside partners. Thank you. Done well. Any other thoughts?
All right, turn the workshop. Got a motion to agree?
That's it. I'm a favor.